... states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. We don't have anybody here from the public, which is good with the fluid situation we've got going on. We'll move on to item four, which is approval of the agenda. We will be removing item seven. We'll do that at another time, the City of Olga Samara Avenue discussion, and we will add a personnel action to the executive session.
One twenty-five-two-one for personnel.
Those are our changes to the agenda at this point. Are there any additional changes or comments? Any comments? Hearing none, we need a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries. Item five is our consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, approval of the human services report, and that is it. It's our motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six, approval of claims under routine business. We have claims payable and the March Department of Revenue PDF. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments? Any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under item B, we'll have abbreviated department head reports. I think we'll start with Jacob because we're going to have you later on the agenda if you have anything else to add now. Okay?
Just wanted to let you know that we've surpassed the deadline for the local boards. That's come and gone. We had roughly 20 corrections and 15 appeals that were heard at the local board level, and we'll probably be seeing at least two of those come back to the county board as of right now.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Jacob?
Thank you.
Thank you. Vicki, would you like to give us a report? We'll do it also with your be it noted items here for the auditor's account with the treasurer's payroll and additive totals, the highway expenditures report, the register of deeds statement of fees collected, and the 2020 investment policy with yearly transfers. And you're on.
You kind of covered it. You should have received in your packet all of that reports, and the surplus cash was, it's a little bit less, but not anything alarmingly less, so I think we'll just go with it. It's always one of the lowest months this month, so it's at 10.45%. And also, you received in your packet the investment policy transfers, and you received all of the paperwork on that, and that first page is like the loan amount. That's what each bank gives us, and that's how we divide the money market accounts is according to how they have the loan dollars, that document right there. And Wells Fargo is not participating this year, so that is the loan dollars, and then the percentage there, and then the next page just shows what the money markets are and how we had to make the differences there. So the 220 money markets is what is in the banks right now as of the end of February. And then the next page just shows you the money markets, the CDs, and the total that is in each one of the banks in the county, and then there's another page that shows you what the CD interest rates are and the maturity date. So, any questions on that?
Any questions?
That is my report for today.
Thank you. Mr. Hill?
Good morning.
Good morning.
The big thing's going on right now, of course, is the pandemic, with the pandemic plan. We reviewed it last week, and there's going to be an interview tomorrow on the Brookings Register, Bob McGrath, who's chairman of the PPCC itself. He's going to be talking to the reporters on that. We do have our emergency operations center set up. It's not staffed, but it is set up over at the East Fire Station. They'll be hooking up the, they hooked the wiring up yesterday. They're going to put the phones in today, and we're going to do a test on all the phones calling into our regional office in Mitchell to make sure everything's working. That'll be at this time, at the request of the hospital administrator, we'll test all the components of the emergency operations center, but we won't stand it up at this time. If the need comes, then we will stand it up. And I understand some commissioners may have questions.
Questions? One of the things, Bob, that we talked about yesterday was the fact that the city is putting in five IP phones at the EOC Center.
At the EOC, correct.
All right. It was a discussion, I think it was Commissioner Pierce had mentioned using IP phones here if we were to work offsite because we have none right now, and so I asked yesterday for your office IT to determine whether we needed IP phones and whether they were possibly reimbursable from federal funds for emergency purposes. We have some here in our office to use IP phones. I know the city has them on their side, so I haven't got back with the costs. There's several costs involved, obviously, a cost to purchase, the cost to operate those phones, and if we don't need them for a period of time and we don't use them, can we disconnect from the IP service for a period of time and re-enlist those services as needed, maybe a year down the road or two years or whatever purposes? Can we reuse those phones? So that information's going to be coming back to us, and the council needs to understand that we will discuss and purchase those and possibly get reimbursed for those phones. Is that, any questions on that idea? We don't know if we need two, three, four, or five yet. We'll determine that based on staff's recommendations.
So right now, if we don't get those, the system that we got in place where they call my office and then they leave a message, and that message gets sent to my phone, that works well. Sunday night, we had a situation where there was a Facebook post, and someone called my office, 5212 number. It came to me through email. I was able to, of course, contact the person that left the message. We worked everything out. So if we don't go with the IP phones for the emergency management side, I believe it's working right now as is, and we can reply to any question that any citizen has 24 hours a day. A message will reach me.
Commissioner Pierce would probably explain the IP phone.
Oh, you'd like me to explain the IP phone? Okay.
If you would.
That is a phone that a person hooks up to their computer, and it's hooked into, for example, the county telephone system. And I'm going to use the example I'm most familiar with. My legal assistant has worked long distance for 10 years. She has an IP phone. It's hooked up to her computer. It's hooked into our telephone system, and it's like she's sitting in the next room. She can answer all incoming phone calls. She can transfer calls to any number that's on our phone system. She can forward calls. She can do anything with that phone that you could do with the normal phone sitting on your desk, and it works very well. I think it's important in this time period that if we have to pare down our employees who are coming to work, that we still have, citizens can call in and ask questions, that we have people answering the phone, and people can do that from home. And if they have remote into the computer system, they can do everything at home that they could do sitting in their office, including answering the phone, transferring calls, everything. It works really well.
So I guess without objection from the commission, I've directed them to look into the purchase of the phones, and if it looks reasonable, we'll probably just go ahead with that process, and we'll try and do that billing through the federal emergency grant money that we get. It's not a guarantee that we'll get reimbursed from the phones, but I think it's important that we have them at this particular time. The number, I'll let the staff determine what we need, up to five. It's unreasonable.
And I think maybe each department should consider whether they need somebody to be available to answer calls. And the one I have, but I bought it probably five years ago, it cost $500. Just to give you an idea, we're not talking major money here.
My other concern is make sure that we get in the queue to get the phones because I think there's going to be a run on them here pretty quick, so I want to make sure if we're going to do this, we're going to act rapidly to procure the phones from the SwifteL.
Is that something used for emergency purposes only, or?
We use ours every time the phone rings in our office. She answers it.
Okay. Well, how about after hours? Is an employee who's not on the clock?
They can put that phone on hold, just like you can put your phone on hold in your office, or it's do not disturb, excuse me. You can put it on do not disturb, and then it won't ring at your home after hours. If you want it to ring, you don't put your do not disturb on.
Any other questions on the IP phone? We'll proceed to move ahead with those. Thank you. Anything else, Bob?
That's all I got.
I had a question for Bob.
Yes, you may.
So Bob and I were talking on the phone yesterday, and he said something that I didn't know, and maybe everybody else understood this. You know, I sat on, when at the year I was chair, I sat on the PPCD, POD committee and went to the meetings and stuff, but what I did not understand is that committee, is that, am I saying this right, Bob? They opened their own emergency operations center, and we open one, both of us?
Depending on the situation, that is the plan. Yes, ma'am.
And I didn't know if everybody understood that, and I'm not quite clear myself, and maybe you can explain what our emergency operation center would do in this type of emergency and what that one does. What's the difference between the two, and how do they work with the incident commander?
They, number one, they have no authority to even open an emergency operations center at that level unless it comes through the county emergency operations center. So that's the starting point. The emergency operations center for the county, which would be us, would be the county, obviously. My staff, we would be what's known as EOC managers. We'd run, we'd set the EOC up, and you'd have an incident commander, which would either be a, if it's a local community, or if it's a countywide situation, typically the chairman of the county commission would be the incident commander of the actual EOC. There would be a public information officer, everything that would, is released from the county side of the house, or if it's a municipal helping us. Usually, they're joint centers, so you could have the county and the county commission involved. You could have all nine municipalities in the county. They could have a liaison in the office and everything, but all that goes down to one spokesperson, and that's your public information officer releases. And then the PPCC, that's where it, we do the generic stuff. We can issue press releases for roads being down and quarantine places and stuff like that, that we, businesses that you want closed and all that. That doesn't come out of the PPC. What comes out of the PPCC is the medical care, who's, you know, how many, how many people's got, how many people's hospitalized? That wouldn't necessarily come out of the regular EOC. That would come out of the medical side of the house. So the best way to look at it is the PPCC system is strictly medical, and the regular one is not. Can we combine the two? By all means, we could combine the two, but you're getting into some murky territory there. That's where you get press releases sent out that sometimes have, they may be fact, they may have the correct facts, but they may not be releasable at that time. And a lot of it's got to do with FOU, for official use only information versus public information, and there is a difference per the FEMA standards, so.
And I just hadn't understood that there are two. I did not know that.
In a situation like this, quite honestly, we may end up merging into one. It just, we won't know until we're called upon to take action. So we're preparing, we're preparing the regular EOC and the old model that we know. Then if the PPCC is stood up, or the pod is stood up, then we'll see what assistance they need, and if they need our assistance, there's nothing to say that we can't move, like finance, you know. And looking at Gunderson, we've been having some meetings, and we've been looking at Gunderson County, Colorado. It looks like their EOC is doing a lot of, lot of stuff, not in the actual EOC itself. So let's say I need finance. I would, I would just send the email or a phone call to the treasurer's office or the city finance office, wherever I need the money from. I could just call them on the phone. They could stay where they're at, so you could work from a distance in some of the positions. Obviously, operations probably needs to be there, and the incident commander would be wherever. Typically, the incident commander won't be in the EOC itself. They're out in the field doing, doing whatever they're doing. But we've got, the operations would be the main thing, and other ones directed, and of course, resource, the logistics, ordering stuff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Bob? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sheriff Marty, your report.
I'll try to be as quick as I can. I just was telling Matt he did a good article on the jail. It's too bad it's still three years too late, but we, things might be a little smoother at my place with a little bigger facility. Anyway, I got to apologize for this report because Matt, Matt did it in a hurry, and when it says 41 inmates, I really only have 31. He had, when it added up, the sixth at a work release is on, they're actually on GPS and on home, on home detention. And Dan may want to talk about the court was as good, and Dan, to get some out of jail on home detention and so forth. We're doing a lot of things. I got to, I got to get kudos to Terry, our maintenance guy. He's doing four hours of work, or eight hours of work and four hours, you know, basically trying to keep my facility clean. My, the nurses, I have two part-time nurses, and they're helping keeping the facility clean because I still have a lot of coming and going. 24/7 is my weak link. If more cases happen or cases start happening in Brookings, that may be shut down as hearing and some of those that, right now, that's my weak link of people coming to the facility. But Terry and Matt Christensen, my office manager, they put in some Plexiglas so that they're on the window that they come up to so that there's not so much breathing back and forth, and we're trying to minimize some of that. That though, we have, just some of the things that we're doing is that we got protocol in the cars for the patrol deputies to ask certain questions. They have to meet criteria. Sent that out to law enforcement. Prior, enter in my building, they have to ask their arrestee a series of questions. If certain questions are yes, then they're called to the emergency room and get further guidance from there. But so far, things have been really good. You know, law enforcement doesn't stop because of what's going on, so we still have to maintain emergency committals. Those types of things are still, are still domestics. Last weekend, we had some domestics and so forth, so law enforcement needs to continue as, as normal as we can. We started security at the courthouse yesterday, and I think, you know, we've cut a lot down there of entering just for the fact is of no court, but there's the, the, can't thank Gilbertson. You know, he wants the court, basically the court to stay open, you know, because the public has a right to have, come in and ask questions or go to the clerk of courts and things like that. They have a, to have access to the criminal justice system is the words I'm trying to, trying to get out. I apologize. Anyway, but there was only eight or 10 that came into the courthouse yesterday, and I think it's good because now we know why, when they enter the courthouse on the south side, we got signage and so forth for the south side. They come in the south side, they go through a metal detector. They ask where they're going, you know, so if they're going to probation or clerk of courts, you know, we make sure they're not up on second and third floor, working with the maintenance person over there to keep, keep the facility clean over there, too. Dr. Heeb's been great, who's our coroner. He connected with, connected with me more than once. He's come into the facility. He's the go-to doctor for my nurses, so I appreciate it with Dr. Home, or Dr. Heeb for that, and so we're staying in touch. My two nurses are great. They did a lot of my protocol, protocol criteria, and, you know, going to be spending some money, money on wages that we didn't, money on supplies that we didn't plan on, but in the long run, having two part-time nurses and keeping tabs on us, and I got employees that are out sick, not too bad yet, but there's a protocol there for, that the nurses in touch with those employees, and they got to meet a criteria before they come back to work and things like that. So it's great to have those nurses. Like I say, going to spend some money, but in the long run, it probably saves us money, too. Other than that, if you've got some questions. Hate to be doom and gloom all the time, but I'm sorry. In my, in my work, it's doom and gloom most of the time. The only highlight is the court case.
Commissioner Pierce?
I just had a quick question. If somebody comes in, they're not released on bond, and so they're being held, are they being quarantined in any way, or how are you handling that?
That, they, there's, the temperature's checked, oxygen level, different things. We got some protocol for that, yeah. That they are isolated for a little bit before they go into general population. Dan, Dan and the judges worked with getting some out, so I have one empty cell that if I do have somebody, I can throw, I can put him in that empty cell. So, but.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Amen. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yeah, well, you know, who knows how this is going to go? I'm in for the law, we're in for the law. I don't know. One, one thing I do want to talk to is we, our, you know, we've cut all, everything, a lot of communications off for the inmates. No visitations. They have texting capabilities and those types of things, and so they utilize that. Also, but we're three months out, is that our telephone service, I has asked them to put video, go ahead and start putting the video arraignment, not video arraignment, but video in, in the facility. There's no cost to the county. That pays for itself, but it's, we're three months, we're three months out before I can get some equipment in, which they can come in. I don't know exactly where I'm going to put for the general public, but I'll have a spot for them that they can come in and get on a telephone and have a video arraignment. The equipment can move into the new facility, so it's, that's not an issue, but there's no cost to the county that's paid for by, by.
What are inmates using for telephone? Are they using a phone that the jail has, or are they doing something on their own phone? How, if they're going to make a call, their attorney is what I'm thinking of. How do they do that?
The attorney calls are free.
Okay.
I mean, they can make attorney calls and those types of things. We program into the cells all the attorneys, so they can call their attorneys for, for free, but if they call out, they have to have a calling card.
So they can, they can call their attorneys, and are any of those calls taped?
Yes. No, the attorney calls aren't taped. No, 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 no.
That's what I wanted to know. Somebody asked me that question.
Counseling, any other, any other call is monitored.
All other calls are taped, but not the attorney calls. Thank you.
Not clergy, counselors, or attorneys. I'm glad you caught me. Wouldn't be good.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Marty.
Okay. And I do appreciate Commissioner Jensen, who is my liaison. He checks in with me, and he's not afraid to come into my office either, so we're kind of locked up there, but I do appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. We won't have any other department head reports today. We'll put those off in the future. If there's something that they need to report, they'll send it out to us, and we'll get it that way. Under documents, of course, we do have the finance officer report PDF and the 2020 investment policy PDF. That's our under documents. Item D is be it noted item volunteers with the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center are to be listed in the minutes for work purposes. That is document art tree range volunteers PDF, so duly noted that that's, we have a list of people that are in the volunteer. Item A is regular business. Item A is an action to approve resolution number 20-11, a resolution changing the location of the vote center site in Siney, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments? Any explanations necessary?
Yeah, I, this, the city of Siney has actually moved out of the Legion, American Legion Hall there that we've used for years, and they've moved into the fire hall, which is right next door, and I know Kristen has gone out and done ADA compliance with that facility. The city council meetings are now in this kind of a community hall in, in that, that's located in that fire hall. That's just a much nicer location, so Kristen's had conversations with the fire department there, and they are more than willing to have us for elections, so.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is an action to approve agreement number 20-14, an American Institute of Architects Agreement between Brookings County and Henry Carlson Construction LLC for the Brookings County Detention Center Expansion and Remodel Project. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Comments? I'll have one comment. I really appreciate Commissioner Boersma's help and the state's attorney, Dan Nelson's, help in putting this document together. It, and Commissioner Pierce, we had a lot of, a lot of items in there to review that I'm certainly not familiar with, so I appreciate their help in putting that document together. Is there any other comments?
I just had a question because I'm, I'll be honest and say I didn't read it again because we've read it so many times. We still have all of our language regarding the lawsuit stuff in that, right?
Yes. Any other comments?
I'd just like to make a comment. Thank Henry Carlson Company for working with our timeline and moving it forward as diligently as we have.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item C is an action to approve agreement number 20-15, a state of South Dakota Department of Transportation Joint Powers Agreement for Pocket Gopher Baiting Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments? Any comments at all?
You know, Misty's not here. I don't know if.
It's just an annual agreement with the state. I guess basically it's just for the state highways. When she does work on the county roads, that's with the county, and if there's deals within the township, those are handled separately, so.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is an action to approve abatement number 20-13, an abatement request made by Terry and Nancy Swenson for parcel number 34075-00800-008-00, in the amount of $360.25. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? Jacob, any comments?
Yeah, this property here had a fire that started in the garage and spread to some parts of the house, so the abatement amount of $360.25 is based on the non-use of the garage for three months. The main part of the house, non-use for one month, and then addition on the back of the house, they were unable to use for four months.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item is an action to approve abatement number 20-22, an abatement request made by the United Parish of Elkton for parcel number 34450-01300-0000, in the amount of $1,114.07. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Comments? Jacob?
Yeah, United Parish purchased this property from a taxable entity on September 27th of 2019, so the amount to be abated is taxes from that date through the end of the year.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F is an action to approve abatement number 20-23, an abatement request made by Bradley and Tammy Hanson for parcel number 31225-0000, one more zero, -011-00, in the amount of $30.63. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Comments?
It's another basement over in Aurora that flooded on September 12th of 2019, so $30.63 are the taxes due on that basement finish from that date through the end of the year.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G is an action to approve abatement number 20-27, an abatement request made by Christina and Nicholas Castillo for parcel number 31185-00300-006-00, in the amount of $56.81. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Comments?
Another flooded basement in Aurora, same date.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item H is an action to approve the low bid for weed chemicals on all items listed on Van Dees Supply Ramsdale's and Egg First Farmer Item H is an action to approve the low bid for weed chemicals on all items listed on Van Dees Supply, Ramsdale's and Egg First Farmers Co-op. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any comments?
The only comment I have, we accepted bids from all three companies and, and the reason for that, it was just, if somebody run into short supply, we'd be able to go to the other company. But the price is pretty comparable between all the businesses, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Eric None will call the roll.
Borsma.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item I is board appointment, an action to fill a position for the remaining two years of an unexpired term representing District One on the County Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion to approve Kyle Vanderwall?
So moved.
Second.
This motion made and seconded, any comments? I believe Kyle's been on the board before? Is he brand new?
He was, he's brand new, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? I appreciate him stepping up. Call the roll. Or excuse me, this one is voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay, motion carries. Item J is presentation of the fiscal year 2019 annual report. Item I under J is the annual report from the finance office and we have a document PDF, 2019 annual report. Vicki?
Yeah, I think Jennifer's on her way up to, if you have any questions on this. You're going through so fast, I didn't tech or email her probably as soon as I should have.
That's fine, does she also do the 2019 annual report for the commission department or that Stacy?
That's Stacy.
We'll just move on to that one for right now then.
Um, that's mine, that is the PDF document. Or the, I'm sorry, the PowerPoint document that was included in your packet. Was tasked with kind of creating a, a year-end report for the county, something brand new this year. So I had, it's kind of fun playing around with how, how that might look. So I don't know if there's any explanation that's needed. If there's any particular slide that you want explained. You know, I just went through each of those departments. It's kind of on slide number five. It shows the expense for each department that's in the general fund. And you can see with the bar graph, you know, where we're spending our money on which of the, on those departments. This next slide shows is actually information that Vicki provided at the, at the last meeting that shows beginning budget, any contingency and supplements and then the, the ending budget. It's very small, if you want this, I can, can forward this to you, so it's much, much larger. And then I went through with the other county funds and did the same thing. Showed the total expense for the year and then taking Vicki's information, put that into a spreadsheet. The non-mandated funding expenditures, these were the non-mandated expenses out of the general fund. So you can see there where we're spending our money on the non-mandated, for the non-mandated entities. Then we get into revenue that shows general fund and the, and the Roden Bridge Fund, those were our two biggest funds. Where we're, where that revenue is coming from and what type it is, whether it's taxes or goods and services or what have you. And then revenue from the other funds, you can see there's kind of a broken out, if you can look at the color on the bottom, that's designated. That shows the fund and then where those revenue dollars are coming for, for each of those other smaller funds that the county oversees. And then this revenue budget recap, this is information that Vicki provided to you as well. Just showing where we're, where we were at for budgeted revenue. And, and everybody was actually pretty darn close or just slightly over what we budgeted for revenue for the year last year. And then we get into some yearly comparisons, I went back three years. 2019 being the dark, the darkest bar graph there. This shows revenue, expense, fund balance, assets and liabilities. And you can see revenue from 2017 to 2019, we're increasing just a little bit each year. Rev, actually expenditures are just slightly down from 2019, from the last couple of years, but relatively, staying relatively the same over the last three years for expenses in the, this is general fund. Fund balance you can see is increasing about the same amount each year. That, that's assets too and then our liabilities are, they, they jumped up a little bit in 18, but they've stayed pretty much the same for 19. And then I did the same thing with the Roden Bridge Fund. And then these are some of our other, this is the county building fund, the 301 fund where we take our capital expenses out of. And then I just put a couple of slides in talking about our detention center expansion project and then the outdoor adventure center as well. So do you have any specific questions for me on that? Do you like that format? Do you want to see something else? Do you want to see something taken out different? I don't know, I guess this is the first year I've done it, so I'm kind of looking for ideas, suggestions, thoughts.
Any comments?
I think it looks great.
I appreciate it all, so I think it's, the comparative analysis from 17, 18 and 19 is helpful for us to know that we're on the right path and that we're not spending money wildly and we're not overtaxing people. So that's a great report and I think it's easy to understand, so.
And if you like it, it will be very easy to create in subsequent years.
Will this be on our website for people to look at?
Yeah, I can sure put it out there. It'd be great.
Let's put it on our website so people have access to it, take a look at it and see where we're at. I think that's important too, transparency on our budgets.
I, I would have a suggestion on the, where we did the highway department stuff, the road and bridge stuff. It might be nice to have a footnote underneath that just said what bridges got completed in a particular year. That might be to show what we actually did with that. But this was a lot of work and thank you very much Stacy.
All right, finance office report. Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Jennifer Beller, work in the finance office with Vicki. So we've got the annual report that we've filed with legislative audit to present today. Just have a condensed version of it, the entire binder is in our office if anybody wants to look it over. We've got all the numbers on it, won't be quite as easy to, not as visual as Stacy's report. But, so our first page has got the statement of net position for the county, just lists all the assets and liabilities. And then the final net position for 2019 was 57.8 million. I looked up last year just to compare and last year it was just under 53 million, so similar numbers. And we've got the statement of activities for the year, which just shows by general, it breaks it down by public safety, public works, general government, the expenses and revenues and charges, just brings us back to that net position number. We've got balance sheet that kind of breaks it down by fund. So it's got general fund, Roden Bridge, courthouse. Then the other government is all the small funds combined together. Then that gives us our fund balances at the end. Yeah, fund balances there at the very bottom for each different area. Wasn't any big changes, I don't think, from one year to the next, it's all pretty similar. Statement of revenues expenditures, again, just breaks it down a little bit different ways, shows each department revenues, expenditures. If you go towards the last couple of pages are the fiduciary funds, so just all the custodial funds that we handle for other government agencies and that comes in and out. That, the next page is actually a new one that the, that one right there is one that they had us do this year. And that number, that 39.7 million, that basically just shows all of the money that the county handled for other government agencies. Any money that we collected and then distributed back out. It's mostly tax money, there's also money from the sheriff's office that they collect and then distribute back out, so. And then the last page is long-term debt. If you have any questions on any of that. And we're filing, it's going to be published, I believe, Thursday? Published Thursday, the short version of it will be published in all the papers on Thursday, so.
Any questions?
I just want to say, having done the annual report, my annual report is a heck of a lot easier than Jen's annual report.
Yeah. I appreciate all the work she put into it because it is very time-consuming and very complex and everything has to balance and if, you know, so it is, it is a lot of work, so I appreciate all her work on this. And it is all filed with the state and publicized and doing everything that we had to per statute, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the commission department director's report. We have some documents listed there also, colorful project yearly comparisons, surplus cash analysis and commission department report.
The surplus cash analysis, information that Vicki had already discussed during her report, I, I kind of break that out a little bit further to show you where we are, where we're at for, for February. We are a little bit, a little bit lower than what, where we're normally at, but again, it's very early in the year and, and once we start seeing some, we just haven't seen our big revenue, our first initial large revenue influxes in April when we, when first half taxes are due. So it's not out of the ordinary to be low in January, February, even March. Also, I've included a draft letter to the township, to the townships. I've been working with highway superintendent Brian Gustad on this. If there, there are some changes that we're making, before anyone even submits an application this year, Brian wants them to contact him and he would come out and review the project that they're proposing submitting an application for to make sure that, that project would even qualify for what, for these grant dollars. So he's, so that's, that's a change on there. He also wants applicants to purchase their culverts out of the county, the county's bid, off the county's bid and as another governmental entity, they can do that. I know last year there was some confusion on the purchasing of the culverts and, and where they were getting in the pricing. And this way, we, we pretty much know the pricing before the project starts with that, so. Permitting costs, again, you know, if he's out there looking at these projects and hearing from the, the townships what they want to do and if there are permits required, he would then assist them with that permitting process. And he would be in on that in the front end, helping them through that process. So if you've had a chance to kind of look through that, some additional things that, you know, they need to, to complete and turn back in. But that's the direction that, you know, as Brian and I were discussing it, to move forward, if you're comfortable with this. I know Brian's not here, but he has reviewed this letter and is comfortable with this letter. He didn't have any, we've kind of talked through those changes, so we'd like to get this out. I, I would work with him on, on the dates and what that would look like. And expectations on getting these back and making sure that we have realistic expectations on when these would be due, so. If you don't have any questions there, we'll just go ahead and start sending those out, get those sent out as soon as we can.
What deadline date are you looking at?
Um, and I need to work that out with Brian. You know, I had, I tentatively put a May date in there, but now that we're, with everything else going on in the world, that might not be realistic. Everybody's probably got plenty on their plate to do, so we might, we might look at that. But we don't want to miss the construction season either, so I know, you know, we've been pretty fortunate this spring, weather-wise, that we've had a nice slow melt and we're not in the situation that we were in last spring anyway. I know it's not perfect out there, but I don't think it's, it's not nearly as bad as last year. But I'll work with Brian and set a realistic deadline. I think he, I'd defer to his expertise on that, so what he thinks people can, can do to get that done. That's all I really had, unless I think maybe as part of your commission reports, we can kind of get into the details of future meetings and what those can look like, instead of meeting here, meeting telephonically. And I think maybe if you want to get into that now, we sure can. I'd, Sean's been working and I know I'll call him out from back behind the magic curtain to come out here and talk with us too about what he's been working on. But we're coming up with a system where you'll be able to phone in telephonically. We're going to pare down these agendas and I know we've been able, we've been pretty fortunate, we've been able to get through this agenda fairly quickly. But you won't see, I'm going to, I'm requesting from department heads that they only give us things that need immediate attention by the board here in the near future for future agendas. We're obviously going to come in and we're still going to pay bills and, and do those types of things. But you'll see agendas probably greatly reduced. You know, we, we may have, you know, if we have to have a public hearing here and there, we'll have to look at what that, that looks like, but. But yeah, we're going to be setting up a bridge call where you can call into, you'll be given a number and a pass code and be able to call in to that and I know Sean has been the one working on that. So, and I know he sent out an email yesterday requesting some information from each of you, so we know, we're, we can identify you on that call. So I'll let you explain it.
Well, we were, I looked into a few different calling options and we ended up, the, the easiest one, that was fairly affordable and kept all the phone numbers local, so we don't have you guys or members of the public having to call long distance, was utilizing Swiftel's system. They set us up yesterday, we can have up to 20 people on it, so that's more than enough for all of you plus any department heads that might be joining us remotely, as well as dialing this room into the system and then also members of the public. We'd be able to set it up, the, the reason I requested your information was so that I could put your phone numbers into the system and make sure that you guys don't get muted. The rest of the people, the, the public, we believe muted unless, except for when we're asking for public comment or at the beginning of the meeting where we're inviting members of the public if they have any topics that aren't on the agenda. And that would allow us to have them join the meeting remotely as well without blocking them or keeping, kind of keeping that, that transparency in the open meetings going. We would be able to, with that, we do have the power to mute people and also if there, if there's excessive obnoxious behavior, simply removing them from the meeting. For executive sessions, we would create a new random key, have you guys join it remotely and then you'd have your executive sessions securely without, with just you guys and whoever else is needed in those meetings, having that, that unique key. So you would be able to operate executive sessions in the same way that you do now, but telephonically.
All right, so the discussion I think at this point is, do we want to try and implement this system for our next meeting in April? Is that the consensus?
What, and I think that, what the city did last night on their meeting, I don't know if any of you watched it on, on TV or not, is that the mayor did come in and he sat there and ran the meeting just like you normally would. There was one counselor, Councilor Niemer was here, everybody else appeared telephonically. There were these chairs scattered around, I think maybe, there might have been five people sitting in the audience. And one person got up and spoke of those people. And I think the question that we have to decide is whether or not we want one. And I think the question that we have to decide is whether or not we want one person, for example, our chair, sorry, Mike, to, to be here to have that public portion of it, or if we want everybody to be telephonic. That, that I think would be the, the decision that we maybe have to make.
I guess my question is how would it work for the public? When you say, can the public just call into this number that's available?
They will call in the same way you do. They'll use the same, exact same code you guys use. And on the list, there, there's a web-based interface that either Stacy or me or Michelle or somebody will be controlling that will list everyone in the meeting. And when it's time for public comment or an invitation for the public to speak, we'll just unmute everyone. And hopefully it won't be too chaotic, provided the meetings are as attended as the more recent ones have been. I doubt there'll be any, any loud conversations or anything like that. When somebody does speak, it does light up in that web console. So we can see that somebody's trying to speak. If there's a handful of people, we can mute all of them and say, hey, we're going to let this phone number speak first. Then we'll go to the next one, the next one, and just kind of go down the line to give some order to it. But given our current attendance, I, I don't think it's going to be an issue.
I would assume that if we had, say, we're going to let this phone number speak, we would ask everybody for their name, like we do here.
That would be, yes, that would be up to you to please state your name for the record and.
I, I think that's appropriate.
And when you join the call, you have to say your name. The system makes you say your name to join the call.
Yeah, sometimes all you get is a first name.
Well, and you can skip that entirely if you want to. I, I, when I was testing it yesterday, I just pressed a button to continue without saying a word and nothing happened.
I use the same system for my court hearings and it works really well. And there's good sound quality. Swiftel does a good job with it. And as long as not more than one person talks at a time, everything works out.
Well, if we have control of that, I think we can do it. But again, I, I would ask everybody that's public comment to identify themselves, just like we do here.
Yeah, and I, that would, yes.
And then my assumption would be that we would still allow people to come to the building here and be a part of the audience as well. We would have to allow that because I think the statute says we have to provide a place for them to hear the meeting as well.
If we do have to have that, then I think we do need to have somebody here, in my opinion. You know, if the chair is here, in case somebody walks in, so we can control the meeting, control the area. And then kind of control the meeting because that's tough, sitting somewhere else and not knowing who's in here, not knowing who's going to go first and who's going to. Uh, it's not going to be an easy deal for the chair, in my opinion, uh, but you know, certainly we'll.
We'll struggle through it.
Yeah. But no, I think we got to have at least somebody here if we're allowing public here.
And, and then just working through the agenda and the same things on the screen. And people will be able to be heard on the television, just like they could if they were here. The quality on that wasn't fantastic last night on the city's channel, but I don't know what problems they were having with that.
I, I'm assuming it's just limitations of what we have.
Yeah. So the rest of it, for the person running the meeting, for the mayor last night, just looked like he always did. You could see what's on the screen. He did his part. He worked through the agenda.
Yeah, we would try and keep it as, as usual policy, how we usually conduct a meeting. Just won't be as many pretty faces up here. Any other questions for Sean? We'll implement this starting with our April meeting. And certainly if council people want to, you know, if you commissioners want to be here, you certainly can. You're not required to call in, but if you'd like to call in, that, that's the option we'll use. Does that sound fair?
And if we do want to utilize this for any additional meetings that we may have that have either been postponed or canceled as a result of medical stuff that's going on or if there's any meetings that pop up as a result of this medical stuff, we can also use this conference system for that.
Sure.
So if we did have, if Bob had an emergency management meeting or something regarding this or anything else that he needed to, needed to have but didn't want to have all on site, we could provide this information to him and those attendees for that meeting.
Would we, other than Bob, who else would, well, I guess we'll have Stacy ask the staff if there's people that have meetings that they would like to use the system for.
For example, we could do housing meetings that way.
Well, I, I was just going to ask, how far in advance does someone need to know how to set it up?
It is currently active.
Okay.
The only thing for commission meetings, I would like to have the code to get into the meetings set up a few days beforehand, so we can make sure that that gets sent out to the public. Because we, we need to make sure that they have adequate notice to, to get into these meetings. For any other meeting, it's a matter of clicking a button and entering in a multi-digit code. And it's a few minutes and then it's good to go.
Commissioner Johnson just mentioned Jacob's equalization meetings in April might be one that we'd use it for.
You could possibly use this method for that, but I would foresee that if there are repellents here, normally they have some information that they want to present to the board. So more than likely, they would be here in attendance. But there might be some people that would take advantage of the.
Again, the, the chair would be here and the rest that didn't want to be here would be on the phone to, to hear their testimony. So we'd, we'd handle it the same way in this facility.
What they did last night, they had the mics all turned on and hot and they asked people not to touch them because of the, it's a hard surface. So if people were going to come up, not to touch the mics.
We keep the mics hot out here all the time.
These two are, yes. Any behind the counter?
But in addition to us, each department head could appear on the telephone, on the bridge call and give their report on the bridge call. It wouldn't just be us, the department heads could report in that way. And so if they were at home, they could do it from there. If they were here, they can either come here or, or call in, whichever they wanted. And then we could get our regular department heads' reports.
And if we do need to expand it, we certainly can. It's, I did ask for up to 20 users to begin with. I'm, I assumed, I assumed half dozen to seven department heads, one for this room and then one for each of you, which brings us to about 13, 14, 15, leaving five unused call slots for members of the public. If our meetings get extremely popular and we need to add more, we certainly can. It's just a phone call to Swiftel.
Any other questions? Thank you for putting that together for us. Move on to the State's Attorney's report.
Well, as the commission saw, we decided to continue most of the criminal court. We're still having special hearings for those that are incarcerated. We're also still scheduling hearings regarding sentencings or pleas of guilty. But we're staggering it so we don't have any more than 10 people in the courtroom at a time. So the criminal docket hasn't completely shut down. It's just, we're scheduling it on a, on a need-to-know basis type deal. So the courts have been very accommodating to schedule this. I know Marty talked about some of the things that we did last week. I sat down with the presiding judge and we made the determination on several individuals to either cut their sentence short or place them on house arrest or grant them a personal recognizance bond instead of the, the cash bond that was previously set. I believe we ended up doing this on about 15 individuals. So that cut the jail population down fairly significantly. So, you know, as we move forward, I don't anticipate any jury trials in April. I know the Supreme Court, as well as the presiding judges, have issued a lot of different orders allowing some of the, what would otherwise be in a formal court hearing to be filed through court documents like arraignments, first appearances with attorneys not guilty pleas. All of that now is going to shift to paper filings instead of a actual in-person court hearing. So the UJS is doing its best to, to continue with business, but do it in a way that limits the in-person contact. So we'll continue to evolve, just like everyone else with this situation. But yeah, I mean, there, there has been some significant changes. We do have court scheduled at 1:30 today in Circuit Court, but most of those hearings are dealing with individuals who are incarcerated, who were still trying to move through the system in a, in a timely manner. So. Yep.
Any questions?
Dan, were you going to talk about a possible ordinance for Brookings County or?
Yeah, I was going to open it up to the commission. I know yesterday we had discussed following suit with the city in regards to encouraging local businesses and other entities to follow CDC guidelines. And I visited with the city attorney and there was a specific portion in their charter, I believe, that allowed them to bypass some of the noticing requirements. So instead of an ordinance, I believe that a resolution would probably be something that the county could do in a timely manner rather than a emergency ordinance, because I don't think we have the exceptions built into our noticing that the city may have. Uh, but I was going to open it up to the commission to decide. And I know I, I spoke with Chairman Bartley before the meeting this morning about the county wanting to possibly explore that option. So.
And I guess what, what my concern was, I don't know if all of you had a chance to look at some of the samples that came out of some other places. But whatever we do only applies to that area in the county that's not part of municipality. And I did ask Vicki and maybe Vicki could tell us how few we've got that would be involved. And then we can discuss whether or not for that few that we've got, that we need to do something. But who would it impact in the county, Vicki?
The liquor licenses, Brookings Country Club, Club, Cousins at Lake Ponce, at Dance Land, Skyview Junction, Smokin's, Wagon Wheel Resort. And then we also have with just malt licenses, Corner Gas and Goodies, Good Roots Farm and Shaday.
So there are several, and, and I guess my concern is that whether it be by resolution or not necessarily an ordinance, it would be tough to enforce. But by resolution, we show some solidarity with the CDC at this particular point in time that we encourage all these businesses to, to close. Many of them have, to their credit. Many of the city closed before the city did their ordinance and their resolution. So I think, you know, the, the businesses have stepped up. And for us to recognize that through some sort of a resolution, that this is a war we got to fight right now. And in order to get our economy back in shape, we have to end this. We have to end it quickly with at least a couple more weeks. I think we've already closed this building to the public till April 6th, I believe, is our deadline. We meet on the 7th to make a decision whether that, it should be extended or not. If we had a resolution that went till April 6th, that two weeks on top of what's happened in the past, just watching the news as everybody else has and looking at this as a situation. Most of the things that are being treated right now and where the spike and the, the hospitalizations and causes have gone up were exposed probably almost three to four weeks ago. And, and now that gestation period has happened, before we really took any action to do anything to, to prevent that spread. Since then, voluntary actions and other actions, the, the, the government has requested, CDC has requested the social distancing and all the way up to quarantine cities and states has made a difference, but it will for the next two weeks. The next two weeks to me are critical for us to follow suit with encouragement for the people in the county, not just the businesses we're talking about, but all businesses to, to, to act accordingly. And if they do, we can get our economy back faster. If they don't and we don't encourage that, then I think we, we start dragging this out over a longer period of time than what probably would happen if we, we didn't act. So I made a comment earlier before the meeting, this is a war and, you know, the United States has been in a lot of wars. We've never won a war where we, we were hiding. So I don't want us to hide. I want us to attack this. I want, we have essential personnel that are out there doing their job and I appreciate that. They're expected to work. We have to have those facilities or our, our last line of defense. In all honesty, is, is our hospitals and our clinics. That's our last line of defense. Our first line of defense is us staying home, staying, uh, social distancing, taking action to hold meetings the way we're going to. Those types of things is the line of first defense. The last defense is our, our medical facilities. So if we can help on this first line of defense by two weeks of a resolution encouraging the county and those businesses, the reason we, I, I'd like to state it is I might not agree and I own a business and I closed for the last three or four days and I say, you know, it's killing me. I need to open up and everybody frequents the place. We, we've lost our, our momentum and it's going to go on again. So at least by our encouragement, they understand that we expect it to be for two weeks or whatever date we decide. I just think it's important right now that, that we take some action. It's not necessarily broad enough. We need our communities out there, Elkton, Volga, White, Bruce, those communities to step up and make their own statements ordinances and I believe that they'll do so. So that's, that's my stand on it. If not now, when are we going to do it? When it's really bad? This is the ideal time to do it, in my opinion. I don't know, Mr. Hill probably has different ideas, but, or different comments. But I think if we're going to do it, this is the time to do it. That's all I have to say.
I guess the only thing I was wondering about was the Brookings Country Club. They're not open to the public. Their clubhouse is not open. Their restaurant's not open. But their practice, practice facility is open to members, not the general public, not anybody to walk out there. But if you were a member, and that was supposed to open today. And they're taking steps to where they have sectioned off areas to practice that are a minimum of six feet away. And all outside, no indoor practicing, nothing like that. And so I didn't know if, you know, when we look at that, one of the proposed talks about recreational activities area, and I would assume the golf course would fill into that. Again, not doing, charging green fees, not opening up the clubhouse, not doing that, just basically the practice facility. And is that something that would be allowable still? Taking the steps that they've taken to conform to that? Or is that something that they have to shut down that also? So I guess that'd be a question I had. I think most other ones seem to be pretty, you know, if they are a restaurant, they got to do takeout. You know, you can't, there, if you're another area, you know, if something, a bar, can't come in there and stuff like that. But the golf course is the one that I was thinking about that might have an effect on, that may not need to have that restriction on. I don't know, thoughts?
Well, again, I not, I don't think we're talking about an ordinance that requires a restriction as much as a resolution, resolution to encourage closing the restaurant, which they've already done, as I understand it. Now, I understand that the lounge will be open to serve drinks to the people who are drinking. That's their decision. I think at the same time, it's the encouragement from the county commission to take all CDC responsibilities and actions necessary. Whether they choose not to or not, we're not creating an ordinance to require them to. If we do it by resolution, that we encourage it.
The city amended its ordinance last night at the meeting to include, because one of the counselors had had a couple calls on this, include beauty salons, spas and barber shops. And I don't know how many home occupations we might have in the county where people are doing beauty salons out of their, out of their home. Do you know, Bob, if we have any of that?
Oh yeah, we've got at least three, between three and six.
And again, I think a resolution that encourages CDC guidelines for the next two weeks is, is appropriate. I don't, we could make a resolution that states for 30 days, but review it on the 7th.
Are you saying pass a resolution today?
I'd like to.
Are we able to do that, Stacy?
We, we don't have a resolution drafted and we haven't noticed action on a resolution. We we don't have a resolution drafted and we haven't noticed action on a resolution.
All right, so what we could do is maybe draft that resolution and later this week when we do the notice, go ahead and do a a public teleconference meeting for it.
I, we do have that exec session tomorrow afternoon at 2:00. We could put something, if we could draft something quickly and update that agenda to have one action item, but that would be, we're meeting out at the OAC, so I don't know if that's ideal or not.
And I'm hoping we're going to have a conversation whether that's a smart thing for us to be doing tomorrow anyway.
Will be less than 10 people and will be socially distant.
It's at the OAC.
It's at the BCOAC. Do we want to do this resolution? Do we want to have one prepared, put it on the agenda tomorrow? Yeah, we can look at it and decide not to put it out or put it out.
So basically, the difference between a resolution and an ordinance is the fact that resolution is a statement that we're making, that we're encouraging compliance.
Correct.
Okay, the ordinance is would be.
Enforcable as an ordinance with a violation attached if you're in violation of it.
I think what happened initially was everybody was expecting Governor Noem at 3 o'clock to come out with some sort of a an ordinance or some some sort of something with more teeth and enforceability. And she didn't, she basically came out with an with a resolution. And and this would somewhat parallel that so that the county has told people what our stance is rather than county has said nothing at all.
So if we would have abuse, I guess, if somebody in the county would turn around and say, yeah, I'm going to open it up to 100 people and keep doing what I want to do and business as usual, we would have no teeth to stop them.
Right.
That's where if we would see that, we'd have to move to the ordinance potential.
Correct.
To enforce that. Okay.
But if the county feels that it wants to move in that ordinance direction, it would be prudent to start noticing that right now.
Right now.
Because then you could get it enacted here in the next, you know, 10 to 15 days in April, so.
And and before we do that, I've asked, Dan, I'd like to know what statute gives us legal authority to do that.
Well, right, so outside the municipalities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so the second question is what would you like the dates to be? No more than 30 days? Or do we have, I like an end date, April.
I'm about in the resolution now.
In the resolution, April 7th. We encourage it until April 7th, but the resolution is until 30 days, 60 days. Thoughts?
I'd support 30 days with a reevaluation on April 7th at our meeting.
30 days was reevaluation on April 7th, I could write that in the resolution. If we can notice it for tomorrow.
And when we do our resolution, those boilerplate ones that are coming out from everybody, they have all this stuff in there that doesn't apply to Brookings County. Let's get rid of all that stuff and just put in the things that.
I've seen some resolutions that are very simple. The ordinances tend to get lengthy because they're speaking about specific businesses. I think the resolution could be fairly simple if we're just saying, we're asking those those entities that are outside the municipalities to to do this.
Any other questions on that? We'll take a look at it tomorrow in our exec, or our meeting. Okay. Anything else, Dan?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner Reports. We'll start with Commissioner Pierce, if you have one.
Well, in in the interest of brevity, I don't have much to say. I, the last meeting I was at was the PPCD, POD, and I think we've talked a lot about what went on at that meeting. I've been working with Dan and with Bob. I do think it's worth mentioning that Bob has assigned Rayland to be working on some of the census issues. How many of you got your census forms in the mail? And how many of you have called in and or gone in online and filed your census? Okay, anybody that's listening, we encourage you to get your census information in.
I do remember April 1st is Census Day, so.
And that would be all of my report.
Okay, Commissioner Boersma.
Pretty much the only thing that I will focus on today is just the idea that this last week, and I can't think of which day it was, the 16th, we had a Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness Board meeting via Zoom. And that group, there's been some significant movement on the statewide level to make sure that telehealth and telecommunications services are covered by Medicaid for behavioral health well checks and things like that. And the state has approved both of those, so that's super helpful for them. The challenge is really just figuring out how in the world to to staff up and tech up fast enough in order to accommodate that. And they've been doing a really great job, but but we may see the need for additional support for folks over time as we start dealing with potential emergency declarations or any of those kinds of grant opportunities that come through the county in order for them to seek additional funding. So I wanted to make everyone aware of that particular fact and and commend them for their their efforts on trying to move everything forward.
Commissioner Cogman?
Uh, nothing to report.
Commissioner Johnson?
On March 12th, had a meeting with the 20th Street Interchange, basically getting things in order for hopefully have some stakeholder meetings around the middle of April to get moving forward. Federal Highway was there, South Dakota DOT and city and the county officials, we were all there. Move forward as diligent as possible on that also. On the 17th, we did the interviews for BCOAC. And then yesterday did have a weed meeting. The state is asking for a bid on spraying of the right of ways of the state roads within the county. Actually, there's 630 miles of road right of way on our state roads within the county. And we went over the limit a little bit last year, so they're asking for a bid on the on the contract. That'll be coming up here in April sometime, so there is a possibility that we might not be sparing the road right of ways within the county on the state roads, I should say. So Misty compiled, met yesterday to decide what our bid amount would be. So that's all I have.
Thank you. My report is short. Also, I did attend the same PPCP OD meeting at the hospital on the 12th. A normal meeting would have about 15 people at it and this one had two extra tables and about 30 some people at it. So the community is engaged in this particular pandemic. So the the public should know that there are plans that have been in place for a number of years and they're now being activated. And they're, you're in good hands in Brookings County. With that, we have some documents, Sky Chaser Newsletter, Boys and Girls Club, thank you, a PDF, and ENR to Kodiak Pork Producers, a letter to them. Item 12 is executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, parentheses, 4, parentheses, 6, contract negotiations and personnel.
One.
Whatever that one is.
125-2-1 for personnel.
For personnel. So I'm motioning to enter into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to move to the second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will be in an executive session in five minutes.